Do I have a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Chris, can you take a roll, please?
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detschel?
Here.
Mr. Yashimura?
Here.
Mr. Gil-- uh, T-Sort, sorry.
Here.
Ms. Detschel?
Here.
All right, so the first thing on our board agenda item is special presentation by me, so I have a little statement we're gonna read. The Board of Education, along with the administrative leadership team, has been in discussion in regards to modifying the methodology and workflow of our Board of Education. Changes you will see starting tonight will be the following. Consent agenda. A consent agenda is a board meeting practice that groups routine, business, and reports into one agenda item. There are two consent agenda areas in most board meetings. The superintendent consent items and fiscal treasurer's consent items. The consent agenda items can be approved in one action rather than filing motions on each item separately. If any Board of Education member would like to pull any of the items within the consent agenda for individual discussion and/or vote, that can happen with a motion and a vote to do so. Consent agenda is not to hide or non-disclose any agenda item. Its purpose is to save time on the routine agenda items that typically have little-to-no conversation around them. This actually streamlines the meeting so that we have more time to discuss or have presentations that may require deeper conversation. Next thing is community comments. We are excited to use the electronic school board software to its fullest potential. If a community member would like to address the Board of Education and the administrative team, he or she will fill out a comment card and turn in to the administrative team. We will develop a roster which will be presented on the large display screen showing those who have requested to address the Board of Education. In keeping with the district's policy, allowing community members three minutes for their presentation, a three-minute timer will be displayed once the community member starts his or her presentation. The next thing that you'll see change is the employee organization presentation. Historically, we have categorized our public presentation agenda items as the following: certified and licensed employees, classified employees, reports from school-related organizations, and community comments. Starting tonight, it will look like this. Reports from employee organization, and the second piece would be community communications. Lastly, we have removed community comments at the end of the meeting. If any community member has any questions or comments in regards to any item discussed during the meeting, we will have those questions directed to one of our administrative team for follow-up. We have heard the community comments in regards to meeting times, locations, and overall length that have created challenges for participation. We feel these changes will streamline and allow the Board of Education to streamline the meetings and be good stewards of your time. Final reminder that you have the ability to see the board agenda just as the Board of Education members do. You can see that online at NWSD.org, under Departments, under Board of Education, under Resources, and select the appropriate meeting date. All right. So next on the-- is legislative update. Are there any legislative updates?
So, from what I understand, unfortunately, there is nothing to report for legislative update. With everything that's been going on, that legislation in Columbus will not be meeting before any time in the near future, so that's undetermined. So, any action that was needed by April 1st on Edgeways or any other matter before the legislation doesn't look like it's going to happen at this point. That's all I have.
Thank you, Matt. The next agenda item is Butler Tech update.
You know, we really don't have an update since they're closed, so.
All right.
I'll get back to you in the future once we open back up.
Okay. Are there any reports from any employee organization? No? Any community communications? No one here, so move to the next. And we'll move into item 11.1, which is the approval of superintendent consent items.
Yes, this is a motion for approval of superintendent consent items. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the superintendent's consent items as listed. Again, as Mark explained to the public, I just want to reemphasize that this contains our certified, classified employee recommendations, our business vendor contracts, anything that was formally read by myself during a board meeting and presented at action. This is a method that if there is something that a community member brings to the attention of a board member, or if a board member has a question, they could at this time ask for part of it to be pulled out for discussion and be voted on separately. So, this is a recommendation for anything that is on the agenda, that when you pull up ESB, you will be able to see all of it. And so, everything that is curriculum, certified, classified, business, that falls under superintendent approval consent items is where this has landed. So, that is my recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
It's a move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Please vote. Vote passes five to zero. The next item is adoption of fiscal consent items.
Yes, this is for the adoption of our fiscal consent items. These are for our routine, monthly fiscal items such as minutes, the financial statements, the now certifications, our quarterly appropriation resolutions, and accepting and appropriating new funds that we receive. So with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the adoption of the fiscal consent items as listed.
We have a motion?
It's a move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. The fiscal consent item passes five to zero. Next on the agenda, 4.1, is field trip handbook?
Yes, the next item is curriculum and instruction. It is information only of the field trip handbook. The 2020-2021 field trip handbook is being presented for information. The handbook will be presented for board approval at the regular April meeting. So, please look this over. If you have any questions, let me know, and we'll be glad to get answers or responses to you.
Great, thank you, Todd.
I have a comment on this one. So, a question, so this is information now beyond the next meeting. The ratio would be changed that was needed for field trips?
Ratio of chaperones to students required on each bus was changed for secondary to make sure that we had a 1 to 30. The ratio of 1 to 10 was maintained for elementary.
Okay, so would that change the ratio, for example, for the Colrain Music Department going to?
Any field trip.
Orlando?
Yep.
Any field trip? Okay. I just wanted, so, my concern about that would be rationale for raising the ratio to 30. Because, I mean, it's one thing for staff and teachers on field trips, because they're used to, you know, dealing with that number of students, 30, as opposed to 10, but somebody like myself, you know, not necessarily dealing with kids on a regular basis like that, to be all of a sudden responsible for 30 students. Yeah, 30 students instead of 10 is a pretty big deal.
Yeah, we'd have to just check past practice at Colrain High School and Northwest High School. I'll make sure that Brenda gets ahold of both principals and they get that back to you. I assume it won't be 1 to 30. There will be staff and probably parents.
Right.
When they do travel. As, it won't be a change from the past where they're forcing people off. It'll probably stay the same, but you need a general guideline for other field trips.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? 14.2, Neola Board Policy Revisions, Todd?
Yes, so these are the Neola Board Policy Revisions. As you can see with the title down each, if you click on each of them, and the public can also, they can open them up and see what they are. They are for information at this time, so they're information only in the April meeting. We'll bring them back for action, but this would be the time to go through all of them. And if the public has any questions, they could also go and open this up and look at them and forward any questions to us, or if they feel more comfortable, they can forward questions to you. Let us know, and we'd be glad to seek clarification.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments, discussion? All right, 15.1, Superintendent Update.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to go over a couple things, just to explain what's going on. I think this is a unique time that none of us have ever seen in a lifetime, and hopefully when we get through this, it will be the last. We are having an open meeting tonight, so guests were invited, but however, the state auditor has passed a ruling that we can close meetings as we move forward, as long as we do a live broadcast of the meeting. So, what we will do is we will check with Waycross to see what possibilities they have of live. If they don't, we would look at a Facebook Live meeting, is what other school districts are going through. So, if there are other platforms, I will be reporting out to all five of you, or if folks contact you with ideals of what they think. We also could look at a remote meeting, where I don't know where it'll be in a month, but if it's really spreading rapidly, there would be a way for your computer to be in your home and do remote meetings that way also. And Matt's here listening, and he's our technology department, so that's yet to be determined. But, this is a live meeting per our attorney's request. No one chose to show up tonight, but they could have if they wanted to. But our next one, in lieu of what the state auditor just passed, will probably make some adjustments, but we will make sure we over-communicate that out to our public, so I wanted--
Our public tech meeting tomorrow night, we're just all at our houses and on the computer with the camera.
Yep, and that's most likely what we will do.
Yeah.
So, no, that's a good point. As of today, we are closed through the 14th of April, and so we are closed three weeks because of the governor's request, and then for our week of spring break, which carries into the Monday after spring break. I do not have confirmation of this, but my gut tells me we won't be back this school year because of what's going on. If you listen today with Governor Dewine and President Trump, July or August is when they're looking for things to hopefully get to some peace of mind. With that being said, all spring athletics are canceled for Ohio High School Athletic Association. They also closed health facilities today, or health fitness facilities like Planet Fitness and others. So, coaches cannot gather kids there, coaches cannot bring kids into the weight room, coaches cannot work out people outside. It is canceled. Jerry Snodgrass of OHSAA sent out a very firm email today. There are not to be any gathering of any athletes for practice training of any type, so we will abide by those. And I go over these just because people always have questions, and like Jerry said today on his email, he goes, "Coaches have come up with 50 different plans of how we might do something over the summer," and he goes, "We're just not gonna do that, and it's not gonna happen." So, all employees of all schools are not allowed on school premises unless they are required for a specific reason. So, if you're leaving phone messages, there's no one there. We are working on a method where phone messages will come to us directly. We're not trying to shut anybody out, but the best way to get ahold of anybody is to email them, and you will get a response there. But, right now, we are busy cleaning our buildings. The only thing we have going on on campus, and that's why I have Chris here in case any of you have questions, is our food service. And so, we had volunteers come in today, and we are trying to provide, well, we're not trying, we will provide 10 days of breakfast and lunch for every student. They will be delivered on buses on Wednesday. The schedule for this delivery will go out tomorrow via social media. I don't want parents to get upset if they're working and they can't be at home when the bus comes by. We'll probably still have additional pickup stations, and we will reevaluate how we do the second drop-off. The governor has been very clear, as has the state of Ohio, that they would like us to do as much as possible to continue feeding our students. And so, I want to talk about the volunteer piece. I don't want parents to be mad, I don't want community members to be mad. We have gotten your request to help, but we're trying to keep it to a group where we are trying to regulate, hey, if you're gonna volunteer and you're gonna help us, which is our own staff, there's no social gatherings, there's no card clubs, there's no parties to go to. It's, you need to stay as much as you can quarantined within your own family, because everything we touch is going to our kids. And it's not just touching, it's breathing, it can live in the virus, or the neck as a virus. So, we're just trying to do our best. So, we do appreciate the offers to help, we're just trying to keep it as contamination-free as possible. So, if folks were wondering why they hadn't received a phone call.
And that's for every student, for every school?
That's for every student, for every school, Wednesday, correct.
Right.
The only thing that would change, and we are getting reimbursed for this funding through the state and government, we have to keep track of it, we may just change how we do it the next time. So, the next time may, instead of buses coming out to the community, we might have pickup places. As of right now, both high schools, who are trying to organize Chromebooks of high school students, need those, have arranged pickup areas through social media and a day-in time for that. We are not making up rules, we're not trying to eliminate anyone, we're just trying to be patient as we find things out. I had a conference call which went very well today with Colrain Township. All of us online, businesses, organizations, trying to talk through things and just trying to give everybody a heads-up that we are working together. We did have a social media glitch last Friday, where the police chief put out that there would be a mandatory stay-in-your-house note because schools requiring mandatory education for made to three, and that is not true. We are not requiring mandatory education. We are actually still waiting from guidance for ODE and the government, and the federal government, on how we service IEP students and what we do have to provide and what we have to do. So, right now, we are just providing activities for kids to do that they can access via online, but we still do not have a clear guidance of what exactly is expected top to bottom. So, we are putting Google Classroom together, it has worked very well, each teacher has a Google Classroom, kids can log on through Google Classroom to get activities to do. We will not be handing out hard copies, because one, we can't collect them, and two, we don't want to spread the germs as the hard copies are passed out. So, we are trying to use email of parents, whether it's at work or at home, to try to communicate as much as we can. All of our students have emails, so they can email teachers, or if they're little ones, their parents can email teachers and get responses, is the way they would do that. Our goal is to provide online structure and activities, so they'll be able to work through the remainder of the year, but we're also looking at, we don't want this to stop to the year, because if we don't come back to school, we still would like to provide activities or online services where kids could do things in June and July, and hope that we can get back on a timely start in August, but I guess time will tell where that goes. We are not available right now for work permits or transcripts. We are waiting to see what the orders are from the governor on what we can access. Right now, the only thing we've been told that we must do is feed our students, and so that's what we're working on. And as more information comes out, we'll be glad to spread it. We are currently sterilizing each of our facilities and are not allowing employees in. We also worry about our custodians, because they're the ones who are sterilizing the facilities, so we have to worry about them. We want to get it done as quickly as possible and then get them removed from the situation so they don't catch things. We ask for patience, as plans are changing daily, new orders are changing. We heard this afternoon that voting may not go on. It would take a governor's order and a lawsuit for that to happen. We don't know what's gonna happen there. But, like I said, things are changing. Teachers are monitoring their Google Classrooms, like I said, they're answering emails and trying to provide students with work. We continue to work with ODE on guidance of what is required for the remainder of the year. As we find out more information, we will communicate it. We cannot keep up with all the social media and the directions that things go. I would ask that you all pay attention to the media and what the governor and president puts in place, and we move on through the weeks ahead. So, all activities for Northwest Local School District in the evening are canceled. It's Portrait of the Graduate, it's any meeting that's been set up or established. We will, my recommendation is we cancel the March 25th Board of Education meeting, and that Amy and Darrell and Chris and I provide you information online and through videos and through conversations that we can record and send to you, and then make available on our website, because we just have to follow meeting guidelines. So, we'll keep our April meeting, but again, that's probably gonna be remote, where you can sit at home, use your laptop, vote in from there, and do things that way. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the press conference this afternoon, just in case you didn't hear. In Cincinnati, there's a must-stay six feet away from each other in place. Northgate Mall was closed today, if you look nor-- through local businesses. All closed businesses as of today, they listed fitness centers, rec. centers, movie theaters, indoor water and trampoline parks.
There's a correction in there. So, as you said, things are evolving daily, things are evolving by the minute. Northgate Mall was earlier closed due to an order from Hamilton County.
Correct.
Department, but that has since been rescinded.
Okay.
So, Northgate Mall closed today, but they're going to, as of now, or as of when I left for the meeting, they're gonna reopen tomorrow.
And that was weird, because Tri-County was still open, Kenwood was still open, so.
Retail centers are exempt, currently exempt, from the governor's orders. I say that currently because things are evolving.
Yeah, no, that's a great point, and that's, right.
That, you know, they're gonna open tomorrow, but then tomorrow, there could be an order that, you know, the governor's got a different order every day for the past three days.
Yeah, well, then, the governor spoke today that mass gatherings have now been changed from 100 to 50, yet if you listen to the president, his recommendation was 10.
10, right.
So, the biggest concern I have is for elderly, and I speak from what's going on in my own household and the friends that my kids have. If you're 65 or older, this can be a deathly disease, so I just ask that please, people use some common sense. Kids are gonna get bored, but we need to keep them in their houses, we need to make sure that they're washing their hands, following all the CDC guidelines, staying away from elderly if at all possible. But Governor Dewine also said, you know, "Support your local food industries and business," which is it for a school district to tell you, but if you want to see them in the spring, you gotta support local things now. So, the key for us is keep our kids safe, keep our parents safe, keep our guardians safe, with your grandparents, and do the best we can. So, this is open to any of you who would like to talk about anything you've heard and what you would like to express also. So, that was the summation of what I had.
Could you address a little bit, I think what I contacted you about the other day, parents' concerns about, I guess, you know, pretty much is unknown, because it's, like you've mentioned, it's uncharted territory, but the, you know, we're currently out three weeks plus the fourth for our spring break, and does that count towards missed days?
Right. So, right now, all attendance has been waived. Lots of things are gonna be affected. We are in the middle of doing evaluations for teaching staff. ODE will make a ruling on that. Our attendance will be waived, and it's been waived for a three-week period, and when it's all said and done, attendance will be waived from the year. What we don't know is what we'll need for our seniors to have in order to graduate. I do not see this as being a problem, but we need clarification from the High Department of Education, and this isn't a Northwest local determination. This is something the state's gotta be specific about, whether it's a senior project or whatever pathway they want a grant for graduation to allow. I am worried about graduation, because I know UC has canceled all activities at their hall through the end of May, and our graduations are in the third week of May, so we don't know what's gonna happen with that yet either. So, we are at Fifth Third again this year, but if things continue like they are, I think there's a good chance that everything's still canceled. But, as soon as we find out more information from ODE, I think what we're gonna have to do is go ahead and provide activities for our kids to do at home, but I think ODE's gonna slow down and let the governor and president make some final determinations, then they will work on what's gonna go. Because as of right now, we would come back on, after the 14th, but until we get another ruling, we just don't know that answer for now. So, I think everybody needs to just, if I was a parent, I would do the following. There are tons of websites out there, we've shared them on Facebook. Have your kids go through those and get in a daily routine of practicing those things. Some of the online assessments you can do is it'll tell you where the kid is mathematically and then allow you to do things through their website that will continue to grow them and move them. Reading is pretty simple to do. Read as much as you can with your children, or have your children read to you, but continuously provide materials for them. And I'm talking about safe materials. You can find basically anything you want on a laptop. Libraries are closed and books aren't available, but just continue to look at everything we put out, continue to work with your teacher closely, and they'll get you information as they can.
And another thing, I guess we're waiting on the ODE for, you know, direction, is state testing?
Yes, and I would, they've already been talk of state testing being waived on the federal level. Secretary of Education said that they would look at waivers for a one-year waiver for attendance and testing, so that would wipe out the entire report card for next year.
So, be it existed year, much like it was in '16 and '17?
We actually tested in those years, they just decided not to use the data from that year. What this will happen is, we were talking about it before the meeting started tonight, so AP test, I don't know what to tell seniors who are taking AP classes. Will this be a year they're granted a waiver, and if you pass the class with a passing grade, you get the AP credit? There's no way to bring them back in and test, so you got that, you got college credit plus, you've got all-state assessments, we just don't know right now. But my assumption is, I mean, if schools ended for the year, we're not gonna have any state testing, there would be no state report card for any school or district next year.
I saw on the news before we left that the SAT, the one that was gonna be June 3rd, is still on, the ones that were before that have been canceled.
Have all been canceled.
Yeah, so, but they said, you know, they didn't know.
Right.
They'll make another decision on the June 3rd.
It's gonna change a lot of things. It's gonna change college admissions, what they accept, what they're looking for.
Some kids are taking ACT, some have not.
Correct. Good questions, anything else?
I just wanna come in on our staff. I think our staff's done a great job, especially on social media, promoting all the different pre-sites you're talking about, from scholastic to the zoos and the museums. There's so many things out there that the kids, you know, have access to, and the average person doesn't know that, but our teachers are constantly sharing that, and I think that's great. And, I mean, they even get the opportunity to watch things from the San Diego Zoo, or the museums in New York, or even in Paris, so I just wanna thank the teachers for really sharing all that, because I do think that really makes a difference.
I agree, and they, you're exactly right, shame on me for not saying it, but you're right, they're stepping up, they're doing things on their own and researching to get more, because they know what it's like, they're sitting home with their own kids, so.
Well, right, and is it Spectrum is offering free internet for students?
Spectrum and Time Warner, correct.
For 60 days?
For 60 days, so it's really nice to see how many companies and organizations are really stepping up to work together, you know, to help educate the kids.
Good point.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Todd. All right, we go to 16.1, Board Member Comments. Joe?
I was gonna say something to the effect, hey, remember the vote tomorrow, but I guess that's out of the question, so.
I was gonna say the same thing as you.
I have nothing to say to you.
No comments?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to concur with what Pam just said about thanking the staff, and I know the, you know, there's a few teachers that I have personal relationships with, and if they're indicative of what, you know, the majority of our teachers are doing as far as reaching out to our students and staying in contact, I was like, we just have incredible teachers in our district that are, and some of them are truly going above and beyond, you know, staying in contact with their students while this is going on. And along that, the teachers are the ones that, and staff are the ones volunteering to distribute the food bags or whatever they are.
Yeah, classified and certified.
Right, so, you know, I thank them, appreciate them.
And our bus drivers are donating their time to drive the buses to drop off ferries, so it's everybody.
It's fantastic, so, thank you.
I just wanna shout out to all our seniors. I know this is, this is tough, I've had a couple phone calls, and Jim ran into the gas station, it wasn't a senior that lived in our district, but he was even asking, man, am I gonna get to go to my prom, am I gonna do this and that? And we just don't know, I mean, this is so unknown and so surreal, and the most important thing is, we do what we need to do so that everybody stays healthy and we get through this, and, you know, like Todd said, it's kind of a minute-by-minute thing, and we'll keep everybody updated on what's going on, but unfortunately, some of those really special moments probably aren't gonna happen this year. But, the key is that we all work together and do what we're supposed to do so that we all are still here, so, thanks.
Thank you, Pam. The only thing I wanna say is, let's help each other out. If you run into the store, and you could run an errand for a neighbor that may not have to get out, minimize risk, please stay in touch with the school if you have any questions pertaining to your child's education. Every email of every teacher is on our website, so select your building, and the teacher rosters are there, so feel free to reach out to them, they'll be checking, obviously that's the safest way, and let us know what we can do to help you in any way. And that's about all I have. Okay, we have a, 17.1, we have an executive session directly after this meeting. Todd?
Yes, Superintendent. Superintendent, the board will approve motion to move into executive session and consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the motion to move into executive session as listed, and we will not be making any votes afterwards.
Still moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. We'll call for a vote. That vote passes five to zero, so we will move into executive session. We'll be back right after that, and all we'll do is adjourn the meeting. Okay, back from executive session, there's no other agenda items, so we will make a call to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a motion in a second?
Still moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. We'll take a vote. And the vote passes five to zero to adjourn the meeting, and that is all. Thank you.